Last, last week I, I really felt bad.
I appreciate that. I was not good.
Well, you sound more like yourself this week, so I'm glad.
Yes. Hello.
My director Kemp.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You're good, Mike. Or, um, oh my gosh, maybe I am still sick, Bill.
At least you're laughing and smiling. That's great, Liz.
Yes. I was not doing that for very, a lot of days.
Too many.
Director Costello, I hear thunder and rain.
Seriously, Bill?
Are you ready?
No, I'm never ready for thunder and rain.
It's here.
You don't have to, you don't have to plow it, so that's a little better, but only in measured doses. Little bits.
Evening, everyone.
Hey, Mike.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Evening, everybody.
Hi, Mayor.
Mayor.
We, uh, ready, Mike?
Yeah, go right ahead, Brian.
Okay. Uh, Local Government Community Services starts at, uh, 7:00 PM. Uh, tonight, we only have, uh, one ordinance, 2144, uh, Manding Section, uh, 129.01, composition of the Police Department. So this was on first read, uh, last week for us. Uh, the main points are really changing the current makeup of the Police Department to, uh, one Chief of Police, two Lieutenant Police of Police, five Sergeants of Police, and not more than 21 Patrol or, uh, Police Officers. This is going to affect, uh, in July 2021. Mayor, I don't know if there is anything else outside of that. It seemed pretty straightforward, but if you want to add any context to it?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I know this is something we had talked about when we were discussing the jail and dispatch transfer to North Olsted, restructuring the Police Department. Uh, also in conjunction with that, uh, last year, 2020, they, um, moved from eight-hour shifts, eight-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts. And, um, so now they have four, uh, four shifts. Um, so I'll have each shift will have a sergeant on it, and then there'll be a detective and other administrative sergeant. Which is the reason for an increase in sergeants and a decrease in attendants.
Yes.
So.
Um, and I know before we get to the first packet item, um, we need to do a turn in all the people that are going to testify tonight.
It sounds like Walt, are you, uh?
My understanding is.
Walt, can you mute yourself?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So that's, uh, that's a little background on that. I don't know if there's any other question, or anything else.
Brian?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any other questions. Um, Mike, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Mayor, was there, was there any concern expressed by, uh, officers about the, uh, jockeying of the positions?
I, I, I couldn't hear you, Mike. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of background noise. Is anybody else?
I think it's gone now. All right, sorry, Council President, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, Mayor, was, was there any concern from, that you heard from rank and file, the rank and file officers about the, uh, about the jockeying of the positions? Was everyone, everyone satisfied with that, or?
No, they were very satisfied with it. In fact, they were happy to have a supervisor on the road. Uh, with, uh, the dispatching. Typically, the officer in charge was dispatching. It was not on the road, so the Patrol Officers were very happy to have, uh, the boss, uh, on the road with them, you know, to respond, when responding to calls. And, um, you know, uh, all indications from the chief and, uh, the discussions that I've had with, uh, some of the officers are that they were happy for this change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, since we, luckily we want this in July 1st, do you guys want this to go on second, uh, reading next week?
Yeah, we had, uh, I believe I'd sent a memo asking that it be passed in two reads. Uh, you know, I think at the time we weren't sure there was going to be another meeting in June, which I think there might be, uh, so it did. Yeah, so we, we would still ask for two reads and passage next week if council be so inclined, please.
Sure, yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to pass on second read next week. Um, so myself, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Mike? Okay, passes six zero. And, uh, Local Government Community Services, uh, ends at 7:04 PM.
Thanks, Brian. Finance Committee will start at 7:04 PM. And I think we're going to be a little longer than four minutes. Um, I'm going to go a little bit out of order today out of, um, what was put out there, and I'd like to start with Resolution 2104, the Alternative Tax Bu- Tax Budget for 2022. Um, I put this back in committee. Um, Greg, I just wanted to verify with you that there'd be no changes to this. Um, we were passing this before, all of the, this Gemini stuff kind of came to us, so I want to make sure there'd be no changes.
No changes. This Finance is presented.
Okay, then, um, I'm going to make a motion, or does anyone have any questions on this one? Then I'm going to make a motion that this be on third read and final passage. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes, and Greg?
Yes.
Okay, next up, I'd like to discuss Ordinance 2145, the Muffin Monster. Director Costello, Joanna, tell us about this.
Absolutely. Uh, this is a piece of equipment that is used in the sewer system in advance of flow reaching the pump station. It's, it's a very important piece of our sanitary sewer management in order to keep our pumps and our flow, uh, serving our community, uh, properly. So, uh, this is, uh, uh, an emergency item that we'd like to, uh, get in place so that we're able to grind and, and make sure no, um, items in the sanitary sewer system can block or jam or, uh, otherwise, um, cause malfunctions in our pumping station.
Bridget?
Yes.
Hey, Director, when was the last time we swapped out the muffin monster?
Well, the last muffin monster that was swapped out was, I believe, in 2012.
Yeah, that, that sounds about right.
And, and I, and I, I checked it because I couldn't believe that that was the actual name, but that's what we, um, used in 2012 as well, so.
Thank you.
It's, 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 it's really the name that they use on the, on the quote. It's, it's fortunate, but that's what it's called.
Yeah, the, the description meets, uh, meets the task, I think.
Yes, it's, yes, yes, it is.
Director Costello, how long do they usually last?
Well, they're, you know, the, they're immersed in water constantly and, um, you know, if we can get 12 years, m- much like the pumps themselves, we're, we're ecstatic, so, um, uh,
Okay.
That's pretty long time to, to wait for replacement.
Um, can they be moved from station to station?
You know, because, uh, because it's so difficult to get them in, um, they, the flow has to be bypassed. Um, it's, it's, it's a pretty intense operation to get them in. It's not something that can be switched out. It's, it, there's really one for each pump station and, and we keep them in place until they need to be replaced. There's, there's no, you know, there's not one on the shelf to, to drop in. Um, it's something we have to schedule. Uh, the county, uh, Public Works folks will help us bypass and, uh, remove and, and put the new piece of, um, equipment in.
Perfect. Any other questions on this piece? Right, there was a request that this be put on emergency passage, so I'd like to make a motion to have this up for second read and passage after second read. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes, and Greg?
Yes.
All right. All right, so the next three ordinances kind of go together, and before we start this discussion, I just would like to very politely remind everyone of the Roberts Rules of Meetings, so if you can make sure you have the floor, um, when you ask questions or have comments, so that we have a very precise record of this, that'd be great. Um, and I'm going to start with Ordinance 2146, but I have a feeling that as questions and conversation kind of flows, we will just discuss the other two ordinances as we go. Um, so I don't want to impede the conversation at all. But I am going to start with Ordinance 2146, which is the payment of $16,583.23 to Wilhelm Roofing Company. Separately, another email was sent out with a five-page detailed invoice from Wilhelm Roofing Company with dates and stuff on it that I hope everyone was able to receive and, and view before going over this. Um, I know I have a couple of questions on this, but I'll open it up to the floor if anyone else wants to start. All right, well, then I'll start. Um, my first question, and, and this is kind of a problem I have with this whole situation, is when I look at this result, um, the invoice from the roofing company, it looks like the leak started on February 20th, and then was investigated on the 24th, investigated, investigation started on February 24th. And it is over the $15,000 limit that council has to approve. Um, and it reached that limit on March 23rd. It was over the $15,000 limit, and I'm wondering why council wasn't aware of this problem. We meet every Monday. And what happens if council does not approve this ordinance since services have already been rendered, since this was done incorrectly?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Well, number one, we weren't sure what the problem was when we asked Wilhelm to come out. Uh, there was some thought that it might be warranty work. Uh, and so when we called them out, uh, we weren't sure we were going to have to pay anything uh, related to the investigation and the work that they did. And then as time went on, it became clear uh, that this was not, uh, an issue with the roof design or the installation. It had, it had something to do with the pool pack units. And at that point in time, uh, because it was not a warranty work, um, and we were, you know, we had to pay them for their work. So, um, you know, that's why, you know, we didn't know how much it was going to be. Um, and I'm not sure when we, I think that we got this invoice in April. Uh, so we didn't know how much the work was until, uh, it was completed, and again, uh, initially thought it might be warranty work.
Okay, in the past, it seems like, and I, I could be thinking of this incorrectly, but I feel like we do ordinances, say, for $16,000, and then you come back and say the final was 16 whatever. So we would have an ordinance in place to, to cover this, and then we would do another ordinance for balance. Or is, am I, isn't that how things go in the past, or no?
Well, again, we didn't know if we were going to have to pay them anything, if this was related to warranty work. Uh, we wouldn't have to pay them anything. So, we had no idea what the cause was, which is, you know, and what the issue, you know, what the issue was, so we, we.
So until you got the April 21st invoice, you didn't know that we owed this much money?
I didn't. I'm not sure. Director Costello?
No, there was, um, you know, there was no quote for the work. Normally, we would, when we plan for work to be paid by the city, we get a quote. So we would know, you know, what range to, to, that we would even have to present it to City Council. So, the city's, um, designer, uh, called this roofing contractor in to begin these investigations. Um, it, it wasn't on our radar to request a quote for work, uh, because we didn't ask for the work. We, we, uh, knew that it had to be investigated. Um, we were operating under an assumption that this was something that this installer, this roofing company, could resolve. Um, it wa- it took them many months to help us diagnose what the issue was. And then, um, by that time, you know, we realized finally in April, you know, end of March, that this was, was not something that could be covered by a warranty, as the mayor had mentioned. It was not a, a fault of the materials, or, and it wasn't faulty installation. It was a failure of the desiccant. And, uh, this failure was damaging an otherwise very, um, uh, well-installed and, and, and high-quality roof. And so, until we got this invoice, we had no idea what the charges were. Um, because it wasn't evident to us that this would even be something we would have to pay for until the very end of the investigations.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, Mary Kay, or Director Costello, um, one thing, when they first came out, how did they, did they say anything to you, like, we'll check this out, and, you know, it should be under your warranty, but we'll keep you posted? Like, how did they present it?
So they were invited to the roof by the designer. So that was the first call we made. Um, he has not charged us for his services through this investigation. But, as you might recall, Director Kemp and these contractors were on the roofs uh, multiple times, uh, before 7:30 in the morning, uh, so that they could, uh, you know, do their other work that was scheduled, so they, they were working around previously scheduled work. Um, the, the designer asked them to come because he realized that the roof had to be taken apart in order to, uh, see what was leaking and, um, and what, what may have caused it. And so, after, you know, many visits to the roof and, uh, you know, removing piece after piece, they were able to work back to the desiccant, take apart the curbing that the desiccant sit on and open up and peel, much like an onion, away at the different layers of roofing to, to finally diagnose that it was the equipment causing the damages, this desiccant's failure, um, that was the end product. And it was only after that was fully realized that, um, you know, I was able to discuss with Director Kemp and the mayor, uh, that, you know, all of this time was really no, not, um, not something that we, we were able to assess as part of a warranty, that we would in, after all of this work, i- indeed have to pay for.
Did that, and, and how many, refresh my memory, how many days or weeks was it from when they started this, you know, peeling back process?
So, uh, I believe we met before, uh, February 24th. Um, with, just in general, at the facility. Um, but, uh, the, the, uh, synopsis of work starts Wednesday, February 24th. Um, and then again, the 25th, March 1st, March 3rd, March 9th, March 13th, on a, uh, March 20th, March 22nd, March 23rd, and the 26th. So, um, there was a lot of work, and they were careful and deliberate in their work. Uh, they were able to, um, very methodically make their investigations, and we're confident that they can make the subsequent repairs to where their investigations were made, so that we can maintain a warranty for the 80% of the roof that wasn't part of this investigation and still maintain that warranty and have this future work to repair the roof under a warranty.
Oh, it was, it was then after the 26th, they said, what we've discovered, this isn't under warranty, so we have to bill you for all this work we've done.
Right. I, I wasn't there on the roof. I don't, I, I, I don't believe, um, uh, Director Kemp was there, but, you know, they reported back to us, and then we asked them to double-check on the very last day. Just to double-check, uh, because we had, um, reopened some of the roofing to just check and make sure that there wasn't ongoing failure pushing more moisture in. And so we asked them, after those, you know, series of checks, to come back and just make sure that the area that we were pulling down to, to make these investigations was watertight, so that we wouldn't, you know, further damage the roof due to the elements. And then, as you recall from our last meeting, we asked them to install a door so that we could make these investigations without, um, damaging the integrity of these interim measures that are in place until this section of roof can be replaced.
And then find, and none of this is covered by any kind of insurance?
Well, I'll turn that over to, um, the mayor and, and Director Single. I believe that's been reported to our insurance company, uh, but I don't believe there's been an update as of this date.
Okay, thank you, Director.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could address that question?
Yes.
So, yes, uh, I believe it was late last week, uh, we contacted McGowan Insurance, uh, to open up a claim. Director Single spoke with, um, a rep there, and, uh, we're in the process of getting them the information they need to evaluate the claim. So we don't know if there's coverage, but we're gonna, we have opened up a claim.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Um, oh, wait, Mike was first.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask either Director Costello or the mayor if there was, what the reason was council wasn't notified of that these issues were going on back when they began.
Uh, we didn't know what the problem was, you know, so we didn't feel, you know, and we were, we didn't have an answer, so we, so that's why we didn't, uh, report it. Uh, I, I'm sorry, it wasn't, you know, was any, wasn't anything deliberate, uh, but it was just, we didn't have an answer, and until we had an answer, uh, we didn't feel there was anything to report. In the future, we will keep you, keep you advised.
Bill?
Yes, thank you. Director Costello, who is the designer?
Uh, the designer is the, the, um, Construction Resources, Inc., the ordinance that is before you to move forward with the, with the subsequent repairs required. And, um, that's who we called and asked to come and evaluate, and then he initiated the, the, um, investigation.
So they did not submit a bill for their services?
He did not.
Thank you.
So this designer, though, was the one who basically approved the $16,000?
Madam Chair, no, nobody's approved it. It was, you know, they kept track of their time. I'm not sure if they have an insurance, if they, you know, how they would be billed in the event it was warranty work, but they kept track of their time. And when it was realized that this was not, you know, covered under a warranty, we, um, you know, we asked them to submit a bill because they performed the service for us. And, you know, in addition to that, you know, if there's any future warranty work that needs to be done on approximately 80% of the, the roof, they would be the firm that would be completing it. So, uh, so once we realized that the desiccant units were causing, the desiccant unit was causing the problem, uh, we had to pay them for their services and helping us determine that.
Okay.
Which is why we're coming to council for authorization to pay them.
Right. So when exactly was the, it decided that this was the problem? Was it his, their last visit on the 26th? That was the, for the problems?
May I answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that is sometime after the, the 26th, probably, or early in May, we were able to sit down with, um, the designer from Construction Resources, who kind of broke down a bit of the, um, situation. Um, you know, actually, it took two meetings with the, um, designer to really get the entire scope. Um, in fact, his scope of work wasn't really wrapped up until May. Um, first, we developed the scope of work that was, um, simply pertaining to the desiccant units. And then after that, it was, well, what has to be done to correct this, which is, oh, an entirely different, um, set of circumstances. So we started looking at, well, um, part of the design would likely be a different type of unit or a different make of unit. So obviously, one of the first things we wanted to talk about was, well, what changes to the venting? What, what, um, operational changes will we have to see in the ceiling now that there's not answers to that yet until the, you know, next phase of design work is completed? But that was just part of the discussions. Can we leave the competitive pool side open? Or is that unit uh able to um operate and be operational while we're working on the other desiccant unit? Uh there there are as many questions as you have now we've had for for um our our designer, Construction Resources, Inc. So in in order to really have the scope of what we were facing, it it took a number of weeks to um to get the entire story that we could present to city council in a comprehensive way.
Okay. Okay, who else has questions on forty six? Alright, then I'd like to make a motion to put this um ordinance forty six on um second read and return to committee. Mike? Ryan?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I'm voting yes, and Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty one forty seven. So um and Mayor, thank you for sending off all that information about um because ordinance forty seven and forty eight both state that these pool packs have been underperforming since twenty seventeen. So thank you for sending forward the, what has been done and by who for those couple of years, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um. So, but it, what led in twenty seventeen for them to think that there was a problem with the pool packs? Because in twenty sixteen, we we spent seventeen thousand on it. In twenty seventeen, we only spent five thousand. If that was the start of the unperforming, and I know this is prior to your administration, so you might not know that. Um.
Well, I'll give it a cr- a shot and if um Director Costello or Director Single might have some, they might be able to fill in the blanks or he might even correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is that in conjunction with um the lawsuit that the the, you know, that this was all being looked at. And um, you know, the desiccant, you know, there was gonna be some you know, it was a lawsuit with respect to the roof and so the other uh other things on the roof were being looked at. And the desiccant units were part of that review. And I think at that point in time, there was, you know, they weren't performing as 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 optimal optimally and you know, and there was a question about uh how to proceed uh in the event that, you know, they had to be removed, you know, when replacing the roof. So it's the same challenge that we had have, you know, with when Mary Kay was Director Costello was alluding to earlier. When we first heard about all this, you know, is there, was there a way to keep one unit going? Um you know, you know, we didn't have as much of a detailed investigation uh and, you know, this time. Uh but, you know, again, you know, you wanted to see what the possibilities were because of the cost related to these units, the removal, their reinstallation or eventually ordering that. So um you know, and it's um, you know, with respect to this legislation, you know, with that language is included to show that it just doesn't make sense to put them back. You know, uh once they're removed. So uh my understanding is, you know, in conjunction with looking at the lawsuit, uh they were reviewed, uh they were, you know, they were looked at. I'm not sure Director Costello or Director Single from chairs, uh okay, if they would, they might have something more to add.
Um I I have nothing really more to add other than um one of the first things I heard when I started to work for for you was that they had been a problem previous to two thousand seventeen, that they had been problematical. But that's, you know, just, you know, you know, conjecture, you know, so as we looked at the records, we we saw maintenance being being performed. But we also see evidence today um that they were not optimal in their performance. Um I don't, I wish I had, I I wish I had any more, you know, more information to enlighten that, but that's about all I have to offer.
So when, when um, just for timeline for me, they were taken off the roof and we put on a new roof and then we put the original ones back on the roof?
In two thousand nineteen, but prior to that, in advance of that work, um you know, they were evaluated. And I believe uh found to be somewhat underperforming. And that's where the language for the, you know, ordinance comes and, you know, full disclosure, that is documented in a in an engineer's report, so.
Okay.
Why it's included.
Hey, Bridge?
Yes, Mike.
Yeah, I am looking at that engineer's report right here. And it and it and it leaves quite the trail of neglect by the uh few HVAC companies that were that were tasked with maintaining these units throughout the years.
Yes, with all those pictures.
Yeah, yeah, the car, the Karpinski um report in twenty seventeen.
Okay.
So so at that time, I mean, I think it was, it was, there was, there was some discussion whether it was, you know, the the problems with the the vapor barrier, the roof, that the roof wasn't designed properly, the roof 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 wasn't installed properly, the vapor barrier wasn't installed properly. But just for the record, it's always been, it's always been my opinion that that, you know, the neglect of these units had a lot to do with the issues that that we were having with those, with the uh the natoriums, with the uh condensation and condensation, the visible condensation in the natoriums of the windows and also also the condensation that we were getting in between the layers of roofing materials. Just my two cents.
All right. Um what other improvements, it just says other improvements listed in the ordinance forty seven? Was that gonna be like the diamond bright in the pool or what other improvements were?
Madam, Madam Chair, I think, okay, looks like the clerk, okay, she's back, okay. Okay.
I have no idea what just happened.
Well, you're quick, got back real quickly.
Eric Kaye replace you for a moment, Liz.
Uh so the other improvements, Madam Chair, if I may answer that. So we, the other improvements um are to the ductwork, you know, uh for both a competition and a leisure pool. Uh the interior lighting. Uh there's gonna be some, this, a lot of the steel and aluminum there um uh would be replaced or refurbished, so the stairs, the platforms, the railings. And then the painting of the walls to provide a better vapor barrier for all the condensation in the natorium. And all of that relates to to ordinance twenty one forty six and twenty one forty seven that are before council today. Uh we uh when we talk with Construction Resources, you know, Director Kemp has been looking at um replacing, you know, the floor of the pools. Um and, you know, we talked before, we had in the budget for the diamond bright. Uh we're actually looking at maybe a different finish. Uh but that part of the project will be done after the completion of the work and the ordinances that are before council at this time. And at that time, we're, you know, we're working on getting um some information on that and the scope of that project, but it would be for the finish of both pools, the uh the competition and the leisure pool. Uh and also some uh new play feature and then maybe some mechanical repairs or upgrades as well. And we don't have um, we don't have any solid estimates with respect to that work. But as it relates to twenty one forty seven and twenty one forty eight, uh would be the new desiccant units, designing them, having those manufactured, delivered and installed. You know, we're obviously removing the the old uh units uh damage, damage to the roof. That would be part of this uh, these ordinances. A new ductwork, the interior lighting, new stairs, platforms, railings and or repairs to the same and the painting of the walls.
Thank you. Any other questions on forty seven?
Uh I have a question.
Yes.
Um during the construction period when the pool is closed, are members gonna be allowed to use other uh cities' pools?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, they are. Uh I can't thank be, thank Mayor Boogs to Mayor Clough. Mayor Boogs from Rocky River, Mayor Clough from Westlake. I spoke with both of them, uh and they were very gracious in um in allowing our our members to use those pools. I know Director Kemp has spoken to um the directors from uh Westlake and Rocky River and they're working out the details. Um but uh we will, as we have in the past, uh have the ability to, our our members will have the ability to use those facilities. The details I don't have at this time. Um I think there's some rotating of the days. And I'll, you know, as we get closer to uh to the closure, we'll obviously be updating you and the members of those uh opportunities. But I really, I really, you know, I really wanna thank Mayor Boogs, Mayor Clough. I I when I spoke with them, there was no hesitation um at all. And I told them how, you know, potentially how long this would be. And I saw Mayor Boogs last week, um and she said, you know, that could be us, you know, so. Um so there, again, I I appreciate their hospitality and their assistance.
Um so one thing of uh concern just for when this comes, I I can recall years in the past when uh our rec center would close down, you know, for the the week where, you know, deep cleaning and everything in the floors would get done. And um I remember there being a little bit of a a snafu kind of going into some of the other rec centers because we have those red scanners and then also we have the number on the pin pad. And I know there's a lot of members that don't have a red scanner and they do the number on the pin pad. And there was a time in the past, I remember there being uh difficulty getting admitted or going into one of the other facilities if they don't have that red um card, which I know a lot of people don't, and I'm I'm one of them too, I don't, I don't carry one of those, I, who knows where it is. Um but uh and then there was another time period, I think we just had to give them an ID. Um but just uh two cents on the, something that has occurred in the past, they they haven't let people in without the the red card. Um so if that could just be uh taken into account, that would be, that would be appreciated. And please extend our appreciation to those uh other cities as well.
A director or madam chair, yeah, thank you for that heads up. Uh Councilman Berger, I know, I, it looks like Director Kemp is taking some notes on that. Um but we will work through those details, it's good to know that now in advance, so we can and uh can do that, so.
Ed, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh Director or Mayor, is Construction Resources gonna make the determination where the new, where the new units will be placed?
Uh Madam Chair, if I may, yes, uh yes, they are, they're gonna, they're, they have some consultants uh that are going to be working on designing um these new new units. It's gonna be a different design than what is there now, they're not gonna be enclosed like they are now. Uh so they will work on, and it, so there might need to be a little bit of retrofitting of the of the roofs as a result of the new design. Uh but that uh Construction Resources with their subconsultants will be working on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just thought of one other question um regarding the use of the other facilities. When we go, when residents go to those, are they strictly limited to the pool, I would assume? Or the aquatics area, rather?
Uh yeah, that is correct, they are just uh limited to the aquatics area.
Okay, thank you.
So um how long, if we don't do anything, if we don't correct these pool packs, um how long will we be able to use the pools? To the end of the year or?
Uh I'll answer that and I'll ask Director Costello to, to follow up, if she may. It's not recommended that we, you know, we use them uh much longer than September first. Uh the reason being is that there's water in the roof system right now. Um I don't know how much there is. Uh you know, we pumped out water um and, you know, that's why the the door was installed uh so that we could check it. I know Director Kemp has uh staff there checking on a regular basis to see if the desiccant units are producing water and it's being accumulated underneath and knock on everything, across every finger, nothing's been a problem lately. Uh but once the weather changes and once it gets cold, the water that's in the unit, I'm sorry, in the in the roof system now uh would freeze and just could cause all sorts of problems. You know, with the roof, so uh you know, we we can use them now and we're using them. Uh but going forward, you know, once the weather, I think it's forty five degrees, uh Director can um correct me if I'm wrong, but once you get below that temperature for an extended period of time, you're gonna have problems with the roof.
If I may?
Yes.
Madam Chair, um that's absolutely correct. And you know, the other problems with not removing the portions of the roof that have water in it is that it could cause damage to the wood ceilings below. So as you see, um now there's um, you know, beautiful wood ceiling. So mold and 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 other um effects of condensation freezing and thawing could cause um serious damage to the roof, much, much more than the work that we'll have to do to retrofit new venting in. So it could, it could, not removing, it could cause additional additional damages. And just to uh also add to the mayor's comments, which were spot on, this water is underneath this desiccant unit, you know, it has to be removed from the roof. Um and you know, this contractor needs to traverse perfectly good roof to get to it. So so there's gonna have to be uh actions put in place to protect the the roof and and the Wilhelm Roofing will know exactly what they need to do to protect this roof and maintain the warranty for it. Um and then obviously, when we design a new uh piece of equipment for, you know, one for the leisure side and one for the competitive side, as the mayor mentioned, it will be on rails, you know, it will, we will never have this issue again. And these current units, the condensation drips onto the roof. You know, that's fine for Miami, but, you know, Northern Ohio, we need to have a drainage system that's tied in directly to the drainage system that services the roof. So that will also be part of the design, so we'll never have this problem again.
Perfect. And I was wondering, um, I don't know if Director Kemp or Mayor Cooney could could fill me in, were other options investigated instead of fixing this pool packs for this three million dollar postal price tag? Or did you look into what it would cost to fill in the pools and make it into racquetball courts or indoor pickleball courts and then maybe doing an outside pool instead? And or and would any of those options be less than the three million dollars that we're constantly looking at now?
Well, I know Director Single suggested that it, uh we have a golf simulator fill in the roof and uh but we didn't investigate that. Well, I know Director Single suggested that it, uh, we have a golf simulator, uh, fill in the roof and, uh, but we didn't investigate that. No, we didn't, you know, we know that we have a lot of people who like using the pools. It's a big part of our rec center. I think, you know, what, you know, uh, we don't have the space for an outdoor pool. And you wouldn't have the, obviously the same amount of time that you can use an indoor pool. So we did not explore, I mean, I, I, I'll, you know, uh, we didn't have any really. Uh, detailed discussions about other possibilities for that space. Uh, Director Kemp, I don't know if you had thought of any possibilities there?
No, it, it, uh, we haven't thought of any other possibilities and, and just discussions with other cities and colleagues. About, you know, outdoor pools and o- other type of spaces. An indoor pool makes more sense for our city, given the climate in the region. And the amount of use that our residents and members would get as compared to an outdoor pool with such a short season. Uh, so that wasn't even really on the radar. There's so much opportunity and use in the indoor pool. And, you know, with the Gemini agreement and being the home site of our school district, uh, for their meets. It was really not even a consideration to think about not having an indoor pool at this point. So, uh, really no further discussion for, uh, eliminating the use of that pool. And, uh, repurposing it for something else has been made.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may follow up, uh?
Yes.
Not directly on point, but, you know, we did look at other possibilities, you know, as the director mentioned. Uh, it is the home pool for the February, February Park City Schools. And, and we looked at whether, what, could we install maybe something temporarily? Uh, in the window unit or through, in the doors, you know, to, uh, you know, if we had closed the leisure pool. Can we put something in that area that might serve, uh, to help with the, the humidity and the competition pool? And that it, from. It, it wasn't, you know, from an engineering standpoint, there were a lot of questions that, you know, actually didn't think it would work. There were also some safety concerns, you know, and, uh, uh, you know, from a, from a exit standpoint. Uh, you know, we, we really, you know, when we had, as Director Costello mentioned, when we were digesting this. For the first, you know, in the beginning, we were under, you know, we were hopeful that we could keep the one side open. The competition pool and as time went on, uh, you know, and that became. Clear that it was unlikely that we couldn't. We did explore ways to maybe, to try to keep it open. And it just didn't, didn't make sense.
Okay. Um, did I have just questions in general, um, this estimated approximate three million dollar price tag? Does that include the engineering and construction costs for the pool packs and the roof?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair, it includes the, what I had talked about before, it so includes the pool packs. Uh, the removal and it, and return of the new units. And I, we're going to go back with, we're going to stick with desiccant units, uh, so the removal of the, the current desiccant units, the design. And, uh, installation of those new units, uh, the damage to the roof. The new ductwork, because, uh, the Director Costello mentioned there, these new units are going to be on rails. And so they're going to be, uh, it's going to be a different design, uh, there's, so there might be, there's going to be some new ductwork where that meets. And then also some new ductwork, uh, some upgrades and changes interior wise. Interior lighting, new stairs, platforms and railings and painting of the walls. And another thing we did consider, uh, is installing the new desiccant units on the ground. You know, to again, uh, avoid any problems with the roof. And, uh, we, we're back, we're back, there's a couple of problems there. Number one, we really don't have a lot of room, um, on the ground. Uh, we do have the field between, uh, Gemini Center and the stadium. But as I'm sure a lot of you know, there's a lot of programming that's done there. We have, uh, a lot of, our little kickers are there. We have, uh, you know, some of the older kids play soccer there. I know some of the middle school teams, uh, have football there, uh, the band practices there. So that's, that's, it's programmable space. I know Director Kemp is looking at maybe some other opportunities to. For programming in that space, so, uh, putting the new units in that area. Uh, would, uh, you know, limit the opportunities that we have already used that space for and potential new uses. And then we'd also have to retrofit the building, you know, as it stands now. The duck work and a lot of the mechanical work is up on the roof and then to move all that around would just. Uh, from a cost standpoint and then would, didn't make sense.
Um, have, in this three million dollars, is that also an anticipated budget impact of shutting the pool down? For the seven months and including swimming lessons, swim parties, the rental of the swim, that Little Side Swim. Uh, rental for bir- for birthday parties and, and possible loss of membership. Uh, is that also included in this three million?
Madam Chair, no, it is not. Um, I believe Director Kemp did a, uh, an analysis of, uh, lost revenue. And some of the savings that we would, you know, uh, achieve. And it's pretty, pretty break even, my recollection. Um, and that, you know, we're not going to have utility costs and running the pool, or I could have, uh, chemical cost. You know, with some of the, of the employees, um, you know, will not, you know, we're, we're looking to. Have, uh, employees there, transfer to full-time positions or not full-time, but other positions with. Um, within the Gemini Center, but some of those individuals, you know, may not make that transfer and are willing to. So there'll be some, some costs in, in that regard, uh, and then we're going to, you know, from a savings standpoint. But we're, the revenue that we're going to lose from rentals, the wave room rentals, um, you know, it's about a break even if I. My recollection, so correct Director Kemp?
Yes, it's pretty close to break even. In fact, it looks like, you know, these are just, you know, guesstimates. And based off of trends and looking at past closures that we've had, kind of tying them to the real numbers this year. But it looks like we may be able to save, uh, a little bit of money. Uh, um, our savings for our expenses, um, far, or far exceed the, the revenue loss. That we have or at very least break even, so we should be in pretty good shape with the operational side of things. Uh, based off of these estimates.
Okay, what's going to happen for memberships? Since we have the ability to use other pools, will memberships be extended at all? Or refunds offered or refunds offered if they ask or?
May, uh, may I address this, Madam Chair? Uh, we are looking at doing a, uh, freeze on memberships. For those that are impacted by this, so anybody that is, um. And, and there's quite a few that use the Gemini Center just for the swimming pool and the purpose is there. If they want to request a freeze, they'll be able to do that for the duration of the time that we are, have the pools closed. Uh, we are working out the details on that and putting together a freeze request form for our members. To be able to, uh, request that freeze for that, uh, period of time. You, you know, it, the unfortunate thing with that is once you freeze your membership for the, the pools. That counts for the entire membership, so using some of the other facility. So that we're, uh, setting things up with, you know, Westlake and Rocky River. And then some of the other privileges that membership may have, such as, you know, program rates, uh, rentals and those type of things. Will also go away during that freeze or be frozen during the freeze, if you will. Um, so those are the details that we're trying to work out and put together a form. So those that do want to, uh, take advantage of this freeze and their membership can do so.
Okay, is there additional costs that we're going to be having to use the pools at River or Westlake? Or is this just a complimentary share program?
So what we're trying to work out with them and what they have worked out with us in the past during our, you know, one week shutdowns. And the, the few months that we were shut down in two thousand nineteen, is that there is no additional cost for our members. If they're a member of the Gemini Center, they're going to have that privilege of being able to use the, the aquatic facilities. At those two, in those two cities, at those two rec centers, Westlake and Rocky River, at no additional cost. And that won't have any additional cost to us as well, um, uh, from a, you know, budgetary standpoint. Their membership is good there during that time, uh, for the aquatic centers.
Okay. And how is this project going to impact the other maintenance at the Gemini Center? Just general maintenance of, of the machines and stuff like that? Will this impact the rest of the rec center at all or just the pool areas?
It should primarily be focused just on pool areas.
Okay.
Um, you know, the, the HVAC units for the rest of the building are, are separate from the pool pack. Or from the desiccant units that operate the pools. Um, the, the rest of the utilities as well are separate from, uh, the pool operations. Uh, the bigger impact would be have, if we do not get these addressed in a timely manner. You know, the humidity from the, the pools and improper, dehumidification systems. Could affect the rest of the building, you know, be it the, the fitness floor, the wallpaper, the, uh, other things. That might be affected by not having proper humidity control in the pool and that spillover from there. But, um, as far as the rest of our programming and operations and maintenance and everything else that goes into the. Uh, we should be, you know, going, uh, at full go as best as we can.
Okay, and how will this, um, impact during the budget discussions? It was talked about leasing or purchasing additional equipment, workout equipment. Will that be put on hold now because of this big price tag or what's the thought on that?
Uh, that's something we're looking at. We had, uh. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, that, thank you. Uh, that's something we're looking at, you know, uh, earlier this year. You know, with, you know, with, uh, with, you know, it's COVID, uh, COVID hangover, if you will. And some of the budget concerns, and we had just asked the director to kind of keep a, you know, just to hold off on that. And, um, so, uh, that's what he has done, so now we're going to just take a look at what the cost might be. Um, going forward and see if it's something that we could, uh, might be able to handle from a budget standpoint. So, you know, it's, it, you know, while, again, it was in the budget, as you noted, um, it's been on hold, but we're going to take. Uh, a closer look at it, uh, that's something, uh, the director's on vacation. I appreciate him joining us today. Um, for vacation, but when he gets back, you know, that's something he's going to be looking at and we'll have an update for you, hopefully before the end of the month.
If he comes back, right?
Yeah, right.
Just kidding. Um, so last week we passed, um, uh, ordinance for the federal government to pick up some of this tab. I was wondering, um, do we know when they would pass that budget to see if we would get that money? And if we don't qualify for that, what are the alternative payments?
Uh, Madam Chair, I think, I don't know, Director Costello might have a better sense. I, I, I'm not sure when. Uh, you know, the, we submitted, uh, that project in the main park project, but I'm not sure if there's any timeline. I'm not aware of one, Director.
If I may?
Yes.
Um, when we asked what the timeline would be, it, the response was, well, it depends. It depends on how it gets through, uh, their legislative process. And so they really didn't have an idea the last time any earmark funding was granted. Was I believe two thousand nine, if, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, during, you know, uh, aftermaths of the, the great recession. So, um, it's, there's a lot of, um, uh, there's a lot of effort being made. I know to support these, um, these grant requests, but we don't have a timeline yet. As soon as we can get one, and trust me, we'll be, uh, asking regularly, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll update.
Liz.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Yeah, Director, the, the date on the resolutions were, I, they were twenty, they were twenty twenty-two, right? So, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, uh, may I answer? I don't think we're being recorded. We're back. Um, so the date is through fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Which ends in September of two thousand twenty-two, but as long as our construction project has, um, had its beginnings. And payments have started to be made, you know, we'll obviously use those federal payments first, you know, in front of, in front of any other. Um, funding.
So, it's, so I know, Madam Chair, that was, that you had some additional parts to that question about payment.
Yes, but it's something we would be reimbursed for probably.
For the, the federal grants?
Yeah.
Well, it's all right, we, we would, um. Be probably reimbursed, uh, or I'm not, you know, we're not sure. You know, because it's been such a long time since earmark programs like that have been, uh, administered and it's, you know, different administration. But, you know, in the event we had to advance the funds and, you know, then we would be reimbursed, uh, that's certainly what we would do. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, you know, we're going to, we have filed an insurance claim. I'm, I don't anticipate the insurance to pay for all of the, the project. However, there might be, you know, a portion of it that would be covered and, uh, we'll let you know about that. You know, we have the recreational construction fund, we have funds in, and that, that would be, that were, uh, would be looking to use. And then also, uh, money from the general fund. And then there's always the possibility, depending on, you know, how much that, uh, um, you know. We're, you know, we're unable to pay, uh, either in cash. Or, you know, we, we don't receive a grant that we could finance it. Um, and it could be all, you know, all of the above, though I've just discussed, some of that all may come into play. Uh, I'll let Director Single, uh, if, if the chair is so inclined to maybe have him expand a little bit on that. And we like to have a lot of, you know, as we went through this last year with COVID, we always want to have flexibility with our general fund. Uh, because that's where we, if we run into a problem, that's really where we can access the money. Uh, so, um, we're always kind of keeping an eye on that, but, uh. I don't know, Director?
Madam Chair, if I could just add?
Yes, please.
Also the cable fund, I mean, possibly another option.
Okay. Um, here's someone just sent in a, a question, um. They wanted to know if they can work out a Gemini shower. At Gemini, go to Westlake or River to swim and use the sauna and hot tub. You should be able to go to one facility and do all of that. That's the deal that should be struck with Westlake and River, that we also are able to use their sauna and hot tubs. Would, you would, if we were able to use their pools, would we be able to? You'd, if we were able to use their pools, would we be able to use their showers after in their locker rooms, wouldn't we, or no?
Madam Chair, I will work out with Westlake and Rocky River the best deal that we can get with them. Unfortunately, you know, they serve their members and their communities and they have capacity limits in each of their spaces as well, and we are guests to their facilities. So we will try to be, try to get what we can in the best way for our members and that are going to be using their facilities, but we do have to recognize that we are guests. The shower privileges will be there, the sauna and hot tub, really anything that's in their respective aquatic centers will be there. As far as any kind of other use of the facility, such as, you know, their fitness rooms, courts, tracks, those type of things. I I find it hard to believe that we're going to be able to to swing that kind of deal with them, given that they are serving their members that were guests. But I will put any kind of question into those two respective rec centers to see what we can do. But without question, you know, sauna, hot tub, showers, locker room facilities, anything that would go into an aquatic center is going to be part of that agreement that we are able to get.
Perfect. All right, I think that that's all the questions I have for right now. Who else has questions?
Bridgette?
Yes.
It's from Mayor, maybe Director Kemp too. I know in the past we've done like different advertising routes at the rec center. We'd be more interested in something like a large legal naming rights, you know, proposal to people to see if that, you know, that could be substantial amount of money that would be could help for this, but also obviously a longer play too.
That's, you know, obviously that's a trend in various institutions and it's, we haven't explored it, but stuff that we can look into. You know, to help with the cost. Thanks for the suggestion.
Any other questions about this project or about ordinance forty-eight, forty-seven or forty-eight? I didn't take a vote on either one of them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for being so thorough. Basically, every question I started to jot down, you had already shared. So thank you. You did an excellent job and a very thorough job as to creation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I'm going to make a motion that we put ordinance twenty-one forty-seven on second read and return to committee. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I'm voting yes. And Greg?
Yes.
And then I'd like to make a motion to place twenty-one forty-eight on second read and return to committee. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes. And Greg?
Yes.
Perfect. Director Kemp, I'm going to ask that you return to our next committee meeting on June twenty-eighth, because I'm sure we'll have more questions and as the community sees this, maybe they'll have some more questions as well. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your week on vacation.
Thank you, everyone, and I will, if I don't see you earlier, I definitely will see you on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Thanks for joining us.
Yep. Have a great night, everyone.
Have a great, have a great trip.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the mayor for the two hundred eighty-five pages of documents and the ninety-three thousand plus expenditures to date. Thank you.
Yes, lots of information with this one.
Madam Chair, if I may, I wish, I wish I could take credit for that. I'd have to thank my, I'd have to thank Kathleen Fan for all her hard work in getting that. I appreciate the chair's question and I know that's important information for council. And so Kathleen, she worked with Deanna and to get all that together. So I, I can't take, I can't take any credit. I just sent the email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the last thing to discuss, Director Singles here, we to do an update on the budget discussion. During our budget discussion in February and March, I picked this day just to have a little recap of where we are with our different departments. And the rec center, we obviously know where we are right now, but we don't know where we are with the others. So I will leave the floor to you, Director Single.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier today, I did send some worksheets in a in a PDF file. I don't know if Liz is able to share those worksheets. If not, hopefully you all received the email and I can, I can work through the the worksheets, just like help facilitate the discussion.
Which one are you going to start on?
I'll start on the one that says general fund year to date as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Just total revenue.
Okay.
Are we able to share, share the document? If not, I'll just I'll work off my hard copies.
I'm working on getting it up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is not the one with the amortization schedules. Is this is a different document?
Yeah, that's, that's the, yeah, that's one of the documents, but there's another one I sent probably around one o'clock today. PDF file that had the
You can go ahead and start and I will dig that one out because I don't think I moved that one over.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Start, starting again with the one general fund year to date is a May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. So general fund, total revenue through, again, through May thirty-first of this year, two thousand twenty-one, about five point one million dollars. Last year, about five point five million dollars, a little bit over four hundred thousand dollar negative variance or seven point three nine percent. The two not largest revenue sources in the general fund, as you all know, property tax and income tax. So looking at the property tax collected through May thirty-first, again, of this year, one million six hundred ninety-seven thousand as compared to the same time period through twenty twenty, a million seven twenty-six. So a negative variance of almost twenty-nine thousand or a little bit less than two percent. And then income tax collected through May thirty-first this year. General fund only two million seven hundred fifty-five thousand as compared to two million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand or a negative variance of a little bit over hundred eighty thousand dollars or six point one five percent. So any questions on that, on that page?
If I may, Greg?
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I was just going to ask, I mean, the income tax we expected, right?
Through the chair of council, President Kilbane. So in in two thousand twenty, we ran a subpoena program. Now, if you recall, there are not risk subpoena program in June. So in in two thousand twenty, the subpoena program revenues, a couple hundred thousand dollars there are included in that two thousand twenty number. We're going to run that same program in two thousand twenty-two. Rita advises to do it every couple of years. So we'll run it again in in two thousand twenty-two. So there's some of the variances attributed to the subpoena program. It's, it's hard, it's really difficult now to analyze the, project out the income tax because of the way the filing dates are are falling or have fallen. As you know, last year, the filing date for the the IRS had extended it out to July. This year was May. So we'll get a really clear picture August of this year, once we get through July and we get our Rita collections in August and then have a further update for city council at that time.
Thank you.
Director Single, thank you. What's the explanation for the reduction in the property tax?
That, we're actually on budget with the, as you know, that's collected through the county, county, county budget commission. So we're actually on on budget. So that could be attributed to delinquencies that were collected in two thousand twenty and I collected in two thousand twenty-one. I made a call down to the, to the budget commission today, but I haven't heard back from them yet. But again, we are on on projection for the, for this year.
Yeah, I just, you know, just feeling that I thought that property values were going up in Fairview over the last few years and that would be reflected in this, but is that not the case?
Through the chair of the council, woman Adler. So that gets reassessed every three years. So next year, you should see an increase in your, in your property tax bills.
Okay.
That would be collected in two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this page? So on this, on this page again, I'll just draw your attention to the income tax. We're running it roughly a hundred eighty, a little hurt, eight hundred eighty thousand dollar negative variance as compared to two thousand twenty. Let me go to the next, the next worksheet that shows all funds, income tax year to date. This is June two thousand twenty-one. So these are dollars that Rita's collected through May and dispersed to Fairview Park through June. So we just came off the IRS filing date of May seventh, filing requirement of May seventeenth, unless you're on extension. So we're seeing the, some of the impact of that filing requirement and filing deadline with the, with the IRS. So we go from a, a variance of a negative six point one five percent. And then on this document through June, now again, two thousand twenty-one, all funds, cities collected five point five million dollars in income tax. And in two thousand twenty, the city collected a little bit less than five point two million dollars. So the variance is a positive roughly three hundred forty-one thousand or an increase of six point five nine percent. So that's really due, due to timing. So again, as I said this a few minutes ago, once we get into August and can see where collections are through July, August receipt for Fairview Park, then we'll be able to really somewhat compare apples to apples. Any questions on that document? Seeing none, I'll move to the next worksheet. This one is again, general fund, year-to-date expenses through May. So total expenses in the general fund through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, four million, roughly four million three hundred eighteen thousand as compared to four million three hundred fifty-five thousand last year. So negative variance of thirty-seven thousand dollars or about a one percent, one percent negative variance. Again, you know, as Mayor stated, we stringently look at all expenditures. The department has do a really good job monitoring their budgets and they continue to, can continue to do so. So we're again, just carefully working through all this and, and again, stringently analyzing all expenditures that that come through purchase requests. Any questions on that document? Okay, seeing none there. Next slide I'm going to go to is the one that stated day, June fourteenth, recreation fund year to date as of May thirty-first, looking at the revenue at the recreation fund through May of this year, one million six hundred sixty-seven thousand rounded as compared to last year, roughly about a million seven. So we're down negative variance of about thirty-three thousand or one point nine two percent negative. Any questions on that? Okay, seeing none. And the last one that I have is the expenditures for the recreation fund. So through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, about one million ninety-five thousand as compared to a million forty-six thousand through May thirty-first of two thousand twenty. So an increase of roughly, roughly five percent. One item in their knowledge is through the first five months of last year, the city did not have a recreation director. So the recreation director's salary is included in the, in the two thousand twenty-one figure. Also in two thousand twenty, there was, you all know, the recreation center was closed about the end of March. So, you know, that would impact expenses as well. So same thing there, we stringently look at all expenditures that come through purchase requisitions. And Director Kemp does a nice job of managing, keeping an eye on the recreation fund budget. Any questions there?
Well, thank you very much for that. That's very helpful to have.
There was one other, Liz, if you can pull up, if you want to go into the amortization schedules, the city's current debt that's outstanding, was you're able to pull that up and and share it on the screen. That was sent around ten o'clock in the morning tonight. Then we can be sure, hopefully everybody has a copy of that. All right, perfect. Thank you, Liz. So the first amortization schedule here is the new debt service schedule for the Gemini Center. So as you can see, in December of this year, we're making a debt service payment of a little bit over a million three. As we talked about, I think at last week's meeting, you can see the, the annual debt service payment is less than a million three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we were able to reduce the, the annual debt service payments from the, from the previous schedule. So next year, the, the debt service payment in two thousand twenty-two would have been one million seven hundred eighty-eight thousand rounded. And next year, it's a million three oh two four seventy-eight. Now, I know we extended the debt an additional five years. But we're able to pick up over four hundred thousand dollars in, in flexibility had we not had done the refunding. So it was important that we took advantage of, you know, the low interest rate environment to be able to, what I'm going to call smooth out the debt service payment, even though we did extend it that five years, this will give the city flexibility in the operation of the, of the Gemini Center. Any, any questions on that schedule? Liz, you can move down to the next schedule. Okay, so this, this is the fire truck that was purchased a couple of years ago. It was financed, it's coming out of, expenses are coming out of Fund two sixty, the permanent improvement fund. This is for the fire truck and as you can see, it's a sixty-three, sixty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollar annual debt service payment. And it goes out to twenty twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty thirty-three. Any questions on that? Seeing none, if Liz, you could go to the next schedule. This is for the pumper truck, again, being expensed on a Fund two sixty. This, the final payment will be made next year, two thousand twenty-two, annual debt service, thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. So, you know, two more payments on this and this one will be complete. The city will own the, will own the vehicle at the end of that.
How long do those vehicles usually last?
Madam Chair, twenty, twenty-five? Uh Madam Chair, twenty, twenty-five, you know, you're pushing thirty years, but you know, hope to get twenty, twenty-five years out of them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh and see any other questions on this schedule? Go to the next one, sorry, this next one's going to be, looks like it's going to be sideways, yeah. So this one is a war two sewer real bit sewer rehabilitation project funded through OPWC. Thanks, Liz, for. Making that right side up. There's a annual debt service payment of um a little bit over twenty-five thousand dollars, just paid semi-annually. Zero interest loan for thirty years. It was a, loan was taken out two thousand ten for a little bit over, almost seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. And that gets paid off in twenty forty. Any questions on that? Seeing none, moving to the next, this is a newer. Uh loan again through OPWC, Public Works, this is the Clifford Sewer Project. Loan amount was a little shy of a million three fifty. Uh again, a zero interest loan for thirty years. Uh annual debt service payment of roughly forty-five thousand a year. Again, that one goes out until twenty fifty-one. Any questions on that schedule? And the last one I have. Liz, if you could go down, thank you. This is the North Olmstead Wastewater Treatment Plant. Uh renovations, um the, the total amounts of the debt the North Olmstead incurred. Uh was almost forty-seven million, seven hundred thousand. Uh Fairview Park's. Portion of that is just to the right. I'm sorry, this isn't a really good copy, but this is what I was, was sent over. Uh did my best to try to. Make it as friendly as possible. So the, the annual debt, it's a semi-annual. Uh payment, uh eighty-eight thousand, zero fifty-four, uh semi-annually, so roughly a hundred and. There's then about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars a year. It's paid on a fund five-ten, the Sewer Improvement Fund. And that will. Final payment will be made in July of twenty thirty-five. So the city's portion of that is uh, it's. Two point seven, lo- almost two point eight million dollars is uh Fairview Park's proportion of almost that forty-eight million dollar debt that was incurred. Again, this is expensed out of fund five-ten. Paid directly to North Homestead. Any questions on that?
No.
If not, that's all the documents that I have uh today. If there's further information that you would like to see. Uh please let me know, we'll make it available. Uh you know, for the, for our next discussion or for, you know. You know, next week or two.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you. And that will be all. Finance Committee will end at eight twenty-nine PM.
Thank you, Bridget.
Yes.
Thanks, Brian. Hey, we'll have uh boards and commissions reports, uh Brian?
Um rec- uh rec commissions next meeting is uh next week, uh June twenty-third at uh six PM. That's all.
Thank you. William?
Uh the P and D Commission will meet this Wednesday, one docket item. Two-two-zero-two-nine Lorraine Road Subway, review of plan for signage. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
Nothing, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Sarah, or I'm sorry, Sarah's not with us. Bridget?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Greg?
Uh nothing, thank you.
Brian, you have anything for roundtable?
Uh no, not tonight.
Thank you. Bill?
Nothing, thank you.
You, Maureen?
I'm I'm just mentioning, in the Plain Dealer yesterday, there was an article, how much money will small cities get? And it outlined all the various cities and the amount of money they'd be getting. I did talk to Mayor Cooney, because um. The Plain Dealer did not accurately put the Fairview's population. They had us at six thousand and something instead of sixteen. So in the event any residents ask about that article, uh the, the amount of money is accurate, but the population is incorrect. Which is why the number comes out as it does. So I'm just.
Thanks, Maureen.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks. Bridget?
No, I'm done talking for tonight.
Greg?
Uh no, I just wanted to say thank you for you, the uh mayor and the administration to uh getting all those detailed reports, you know. All the uh maintenance expenses going back to two thousand sixteen, that was, plus the two thousand seventeen report, having all that stuff in writing. And all the copies of the actual reports is, uh I think, very beneficial, so I just want to say thank you for that, and uh that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh Liz?
Um, well, I know uh you guys did receive the cost for, I forget what the year started, but I do have a document that outlines. Um all the costs that were paid, I think it goes back to twenty oh nine, so I will forward that to everyone. Um but also, the other thing was, I checked with the Auditor of State's Office in regard to the. House Bill Nine Training and Sunshine Law Training, and as of. A couple of weeks ago, they were not doing in-person training for this. This is a training that everyone has to take during their elected term, so. And we're what, a year and a half now into the four-year term, so. I'm going to check, double back again and see if maybe they have changed course on that. Um it's always available to take online. It is on, like a three-hour. Course uh online, but you can take um breaks with it. Um there is a. I'm trying to say assessment at the end, but I will check into that and let you know those options. That's all I got.
Thanks a lot, Liz. Thanks for always uh making sure that uh the parks uh elected representatives are. Have everything taken care of. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh I spoke with Mayor Cooney before the uh meeting, so in this legislation, we have scheduled for three reads. And some legislation that's coming down the pike, some grant legislation, like to get um moved by the end of the month. So he and I were discussing uh the possibility of having a me- uh a special meeting of council on the twenty-eighth. Um after our committee meeting. Council be uh open for that?
Yes.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Very good. We'll put it on the agenda then. Okay, thank you all, and uh everyone have a good rest of your week.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Have a great night.
Thank you.